Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, February 1st. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We would ask folks who are with us if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation delivered by Reverend Donna Glottry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I start this morning with a few words selected verses from the Second Samuel, Chapter 23, and it was of a vision cast by King David of old. God's Spirit spoke through me; his words took shape on my tongue. And he said, "Whoever governs fairly and well, who rules in the fear of God, is like the first light at daybreak without a cloud in the sky, like green grass carpeting earth, glistening under fresh rain." Almighty Creator, this morning, as those elected to serve the city begin a new session, lead them to govern fairly, to govern wisely, to govern well, to be mindful of the many challenges of balancing the needs of all segments of our city and the great and rich diversity of our people. May they take counsel from staff who has weighed the issues and from citizens who have expressed their concerns, give them clarity and strength to make wise decisions, and Lord may their decisions guide Wichita toward a future that is as fresh as the first light at daybreak without a cloud in the sky and the green grass carpeting the earth, glistening under the fresh melt of new fallen snow or the fresh rain. Oh, Lord, what a vision. Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. And I've got to mention Reverend Doughtley is the pastor of St. Paul's United Methodist Church. Madam Clerk?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 25th, 2022, and corrected minutes of the regular meetings on December 21st and December 28th, 2021.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Does this mean, is this going to be separated into two separate votes for the meetings that Maggie and I have been serving and the meetings that we have not been serving?
It's a good question. We could make a motion to have, for, to divide these into two different votes. And I'm looking at...
Mayor, I would recommend that the motion be separately for the minutes in which the new council members were here and in which they weren't.
Of course. So with that, I will make a, well, let's have further discussion on this item, and then I plan to make a motion to divide this question so we can have two separate votes on the December 21st meeting and then on the January 25th meeting so that members who weren't here can abstain. But we can still have discussion of the item as a whole at this point. Is there any discussion on the two sets of the minutes and then the corrected minutes? If not, I'll make a motion to pass the December 21st and December 28th minutes as corrected. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. Having received five yea votes and two abstentions, that motion does pass. I will make an additional motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 25th, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. I'd like to thank Legal for her wise counsel on splitting that. And Madam Clerk?
Public agenda, Jane Burns, city and citizens to make climate change better.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Burns. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Jane Burns, and I live in District One in Wichita. Thank you so much for the Sustainability Board that you all approved last September. The folks on the Sustainability Board so far appear eager and well-informed, have their own valuable perspectives, and are organizing to work together. However, climate change is not waiting on them or on us. In Wichita, we of course look forward to their official recommendation and also to the March 31st report of the Wichita Environmental Finance Center. In addition, however, we as individuals and you as policymakers must be vigilant about our own climate future, our youth, who will live around our decisions or our neglect. So imagine my joy when I hear Gary Jansen, Gary Jansen, and on video talking about a new perspective to improve our air and therefore our planet, the timing of traffic lights downtown. Let me tell you how totally fabulous that will be for our own lungs and wallets and to our air and our youth and our planet. This analysis is by a friend who's a transportation expert and an engineer. On one stretch of Douglas, from Washington to Waco, there are nine sets of signals that carry about 10,000 cars a day. If one-third of them have to stop at each of the nine lights, that's 30,000 stops a day. Each car burns an ounce and a half of gas, idling and accelerating from each light. That's 350 gallons of gas wasted on just one stretch of road, one popular road per day. At $3 a gallon for gas multiplied by 128,000 gallons of gas wasted, that's almost $400,000 a year for residents sitting at stoplights in just one stretch of one street. But worse, gets worse because that's our lungs and our youth and our planet. 20 pounds of carbon dioxide are released for each gallon of fuel burned. So each year, that's over 2,500,000 pounds of carbon dioxide emitted on just that one street, stretch of one street. And the math goes on and on because there are almost 5,000 signalized intersections in our metro area. So fortunately, Wichita's in line for some new wonderful bonus federal transportation money. So please spend some, authorize some of that wonderful funding to time lights throughout the city. Oh, and here's another suggestion. Retire signals at lesser-used intersections and replace them with roundabouts. Roundabouts improve traffic flow and safety because a typical intersection has close to 30 potential accident points, and roundabouts are much, much safer with only eight conflict points. So all that will save air quality, gas, money, wait time, and create safer streets for bicyclists, pedestrians, our eight-year-olds, our 80-year-olds, and every resident and tourist in between. So thank you so much to Gary and Alan for starting this and to you all for listening to me again today. Thank you so much for looking closer at the environmental consequences of transportation, the transportation we take for granted, but we can improve. Please preserve and protect our air, our lungs, our pocketbooks, our planet, and our kids. Our kids are worth it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items one through eight.
Is there any member wish to discuss the consent agenda items one through eight? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Yes, I would like to pull 4A.
I'm sorry, was that A? I mean, four?
Four, yeah.
Item four will be pulled. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to pass the consent agenda as is with the exception of item four. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, items one through eight with the exception of four have passed. We are back on item four. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Yes, I was just wanting to discuss, it looks like we're going to be paying some money to save a row of trees, which I am fully in support of. I just had a couple of questions as to how many trees and is this something that we're going to be doing regularly from here on?
Very good. The Chair recognizes...
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. So this is on a new residential development in northeast part of the community. So typically what happens with these developments and even with the best efforts during the design to recognize the location of new public utilities, this is just basically a hedge row, a tree row, which is desirable to keep in the backyards of these properties. But one thing I want to mention first and foremost, this is 100% funded by special assessments. So any of this work, including this change order, will be assessed back to the property owner. So this has not come directly from city funding. We provide the special assessments, and again, that assessment goes on the property owners. This is not unusual. Typically, the designers try to make sure they understand exactly where the limits of the trees are. But what happens over the course of time, from the point in time that there's a plat's completed and petitions are submitted for this work, you get things grow a little bit, kind of what happens. Maybe the original survey that the designers did didn't exactly pick up where the trees are. So once things start moving and we go out and do some surveying work and see where the sewer is going to be, we find out that it's going to have a bigger impact on trees than anticipated. And so that's the purpose of this change order, again, is to try, it's basically to save an entire tree row. I can't give you a number, but I know along the north side of this development, and it's typical, again, that they'll want to try to save all the trees that they can.
Yes, sir, I can appreciate that. I think we're losing about 5,000 trees a year. So I just want to say thank you for making this effort and I just, wherever we can, let's continue to pay heed to the trees.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Tuttle as this item resides in District Two.
Thank you very much. I would make a motion to approve the change order number one and change the, and change order limit adjustment.
Now, second. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Back in the original agenda, Madam Clerk?
Board of bids and contracts dated January 31st, 2022.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Hannah Lang, Department of Finance, here for the January 31st Board of Bid Recommendations. First engineering bid we have is Stryker Sports Phase Eight Locker Room and Press Box Expansion deferred to February 7th Board of Bids. 37th Street North Waterline Extension deferred to February 7th. Water Distribution System and Paving Marionette Third Edition, recommendation is Pearson Construction for Group One and Two for an aggregate bid total of $198,159. This is our purchasing procurement website as well as our current open request for proposals. That's the Board of Bid Recommendations. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions of staff? See none, thank you. Is there any input from the public on this item? See none. If there's any, is there any discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize necessary signatures.
Second.
Sorry. Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. Having received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing considering an adoption of a project plan for the Phase One Project Plan for the ICT 21 Redevelopment District Tax Increment Financing.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of City Council. Mark Elder with the Office of Economic Development here today. The item before you is a public hearing for the project plan and development agreement related to development of this project. First, I want to kind of go back, especially since we have some new council members, and talk about what TIF does. And the biggest thing to remember is that TIF doesn't increase the sales tax or private taxes that occur in that district as is, but it captures the new taxes that are generated only by this development that occurs within there. And again, it only happens within those boundaries of that. It does not impact anybody outside of that district. And the increment is the difference between those taxes that are actually collected today and what, you know, will be collected when that development occurs and the area receives that investment. This is kind of a basic TIF model that's used a lot to kind of represent what happens. The orange there is that existing tax base that occurs today. Some models even actually have it going down, which can happen in some districts as you're trying to stop the decline in value. But for this, you've got the base that's fixed. So it stays flat for those full 20 years of that TIF project, but then you've got these incremental taxes that for the 20-year period of the project are collected, but they go back into paying for the investments going on within that district. But as you can see, that dark blue at the end, you have a new tax base when that TIF expires, and now you have a higher tax revenue that's going to all taxing jurisdictions, and you have this new development that is occurring. It's kicking off jobs, taxes, and everything else associated with that. This particular development is the redevelopment of land near 21st and 135 and includes redevelopment of the former El Paso Refinery Site, which has been empty for about 10 to 15 years now. The developer plans approximately about a million square feet of new construction within there. That include warehousing, manufacturing, industrial, as well as some transit facilities. So that area, it is fitting for having kind of that high-end industrial use as well as some uses that are associated with being near the interstate. They also do plan on participating in the city's speculative warehouse program. They actually began, I believe, in November of 2021 with one of their first projects. Although they will be participating in the agreement addresses, I just want to make sure that each one of the spec projects would still come to the city council for approval as they're ready to go forward with those. This map illustrates the Phase One Project area. The dark black line is the entire TIF district, and then those kind of hash lines one, two, and three are the boundaries for the Phase One Project area. We broke this down when we established the TIF district to have multiple potential project areas, but we, for this project, we grouped areas one, two, and three into one. That's why it's called just the Phase One Project area. This is preliminary site plan of how they conceive the project occurring as they develop. As you can see, it has the infrastructure, it has a mixed use even identified within that of even some potential office, depending on what the users might be. Okay. For the project plan, the use of tax increment finance is broken into two parts. There's just a little bit less than $6 million that would be tax increment financing bonds. And that's about 5.4 million in the infrastructure improvements that go into support this development, and all of these bonds would be guaranteed by the developer. But that 5.9 does include a 10% contingency in there that if there's any overruns for that infrastructure, it would be included. But, so it's a maximum of that 6 million in the bonds. With that, if the project creates additional revenue above what's necessary to be able to pay that debt payment associated with the TIF bonds, the developer could be eligible for additional 1.8 million of pay-as-you-go funds for the site improvements that they've done to do that development. Again, it's only if there's an additional increment, it's only if those costs have occurred in the project before they would be reimbursable. The developer has agreed to certain milestones in this project in order to be able to be eligible for the tax increment financing. With that, they've set up the schedule of the amount of square footage they plan to complete each year in order to be eligible for the TIF. With this, you can, I'm not going to go through those all, but you can see over about the next 10 to 15 years, a little over 500,000 square feet of development that would occur and receive a certificate of occupancy in order to be in agreement with the TIF agreement. With that separately, there is still the participation of the spec industrial program. So this is identified separate from the square footage we just talked about. This is in addition to, but they plan at least three speculative warehouse industrial projects within that. As you can see, the first one already began in November of 2021, and they have two more that are agreed to over the next few years. Again, each one of those projects will be submitted to the city council for approval at that time. With that, we have representatives from the development team in the audience, and I believe also maybe via the internet, but I will also stand for questions.
Are questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public? See none? We'll bring the discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard for a motion.
Yes, thank you. I move to recess this public hearing to February 15th at 9:00 in order to provide the governing bodies, city staff, and members of the public additional time to review the proposed ICT 21 Redevelopment District Project Plan.
In the, to the 15th, so that's a meeting two weeks from now. Very good. I will second that motion so that we can have more time on this item. Motion has been made and seconded. Clerk, roll up and roll. Members cast the vote. Having received 78 votes, that motion does pass, and we will revisit this item on February 15th. Madam Clerk?
Public hearing and a request for a letter of intent for industrial revenue bonds, Steel Almond Tree LP.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Tim Goodpast, here with the city's Office of Economic Development. For the record, that and before you today is a request for a multifamily housing revenue bond letter of intent for the acquisition of Almond Tree Apartments. Steel Almond Tree LP is a real estate holding entity that was organized recently for the acquisition of the Almond Tree Apartments by Steel Properties, which is a real estate investor based out of Denver, Colorado. This will be the fourth affordable housing project that Steel Properties has acquired in Wichita. The first was Shady Way Plaza Tower, the second was Somerset Tower, and the third was Greenway Park Apartments. The first two have been renovated and are operating, and the third one is continuing to operate and is under renovation today. Steel Properties is acquiring Almond Tree Apartments, which is located at 339 North Country Acres Avenue, which is near Tyler and Second Street to rehab the facility. The developer is requesting a letter of intent to issue multifamily housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $5 million. In this aerial, you can see on the left side Tyler Road running from top to bottom, and along the bottom of this aerial, you can see Second Street. So north of Second Street and east of Tyler, in the area outlined in red, is the location of Almond Tree Apartments at 339 North Country Acres Avenue. The facility is a 50-unit apartment complex that is geared towards low-income seniors and disabled residents. It was built in 1987 and has received few upgrades or renovations since that time. The facility is covered by a Section 8 Housing Assistance Payment Program, which subsidizes a portion of the residence' rent, and the developer does intend to renew the Housing Assistance Payment Program for additional 20 years to guarantee that it will remain affordable housing. In addition to their acquisition costs, Steel Properties intends to invest approximately 2.2 million in renovating the facility. Some of the renovations will include addressing ADA requirements, bathroom and kitchen renovations, replacement and painting of the exterior siding, regressing of landscaping areas, installing hardwired smoke and CO2 detectors, and new refrigerators and ranges in all units in addition to other improvements. These are some of the photos of the interior of the facility. These are additional, both interior and exterior, photos of the facility. Steel Almond Tree has applied for 4% low-income housing tax credits through the state of Kansas, which requires them to use tax-exempt bond financing, which is what they are proposing here today. The bonds will be used for a sales tax exemption only. No property tax abatement has been requested, and the bonds will be placed privately with KeyBank National Association. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Andrew Bennett and Justin Unger, who are with Steel Properties, are both online virtually and can answer any questions specific to the project, and I would be happy to stand for any questions as well.
Is there any questions for staff? See none? Is there input from the public on? Oh, my apologies. Councilmember Boobog?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we done these before, Tim?
Yes, we have done this frequently. As I stated, when developer uses 4% low-income housing tax credits, they are required to use tax-exempt financing. The tax-exempt financing, when we say tax-exempt, we're not referring to property tax. We're referring to the fact that with an investor who buys the tax credits does not have to pay income on the tax credits, the interest that they receive on the tax credits, and therefore are able to offer a lower interest rate, which again makes... which again makes the project more affordable for the tenants. And we have done a number of projects over the years that utilize low-income housing tax credits where the city acts as the issuer for the bonds.
So are the bins, are we covering both the acquisition cost and the renovation? Is that all included in the bonds?
It's all included in that $5 million amount, correct.
Okay, thanks.
With that, the public part of the forum, it looks like we have, we have Justin and Andrew. We'll start off with Justin to, if you'd like to speak to this item, then we can go to Andrew. And if you all aren't planning on speaking to her, if you're just here for questions, then that's fine as well. But Justin, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Whipple. I didn't have much to say. Obviously, this is our fourth project in the city, so just wanted to mention to the council. And Tim, you know, we really value the partnership with the city and your continued support in order to preserve these affordable housing projects. So just excited to continue to work with the city, and thanks again for everyone's support.
Excellent. We thank you for being here. Andrew, would you like to have the floor? What was yours?
Yeah, I don't really have anything additional. Just echoing what Justin said, we're looking forward to a fourth successful project in Wichita.
Excellent. We thank you both for being here. If there's no more public input, then we'll bring discussion back to the bench. And the chair recognizes Councilmember Frye as this resides in District 5.
Thank you, sir. And I would also like to echo the comments made to Andrew and Justin. Appreciate the continued investment by Steel Properties in Wichita. I appreciate you branching out to District 5. Thank you. This is a property that, as we saw in the presentation, has been around since 1987, and it's needed some TLC. So I know the West Link neighborhood will appreciate it, as do I. So with that, I would like to make a motion that the city council close the public hearing, adopt the resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Again.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk or open the roll, members cast the vote. Having received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Design Services Agreement and Funding for Improvements to Hoover Road from Zoo Boulevard to 29th Street North.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you is a request for funding and approval of a design consultant for improvements to Hoover Road from Zoo Boulevard to 29th Street North. Some history on this project. In September of 2021, the district advisory board unanimously approved the proposed design concept for this project. In October of 2021, the city council approved that same design concept. And in November of 2021, the staff screening and selection committee interviewed two consulting firms that responded to the city's request for design of the project. Trans Systems was selected for the design based on their approach, extensive knowledge, and expertise for the area and past performances on similar projects. Hoover Road between 21st and 29th is currently a two-lane asphalt mat. Just to talk again a little bit about the concept here and what the proposal is. The design will include a three-lane roadway with center turn lane. That will include curb and gutter and underground storm sewers. Project will also include a six-foot sidewalk on the west side and a 10-foot path on the east side. Construction is planned for 2023 pending your approval today. And during that time, one lane of traffic will be maintained at all times. A couple of things about this. We started this project as a multi-use path only along the east side of Hoover several years ago. That's what the funding was included in the CIP. The reason being is that a private development had constructed a path from 29th Street North up to K-96, and there was a desire to make that connection down to the zoo. Because of the potential impact to right-of-way on the properties on the east side, and I talked to the city council at the time about that, there was a desire to move that back into a full project. At the time, improvements to Hoover were included in the CIP, but were probably about five years out. So the decision was made to move the funding up and include the path as part of the paving project so we could lessen the impact on the right-of-way. This shows the limits with Zoo Boulevard being to the left side. The first phase of this project included installation of a traffic signal at Zoo and Hoover, which is now operational. Took us a little bit more time than we had hoped for, mostly because of some supply chain and material delivery issues. But that signal is operational at this time. And we've got some coordination with the Northwest Water Treatment Plant. So our new water treatment plant, I'm sure everybody's aware, is southeast of the intersection of 21st Street and Hoover. There's some piping that needs to go through that intersection. So we're coordinating closely with the design build team for the treatment plant to make sure we've got our timing right here between the two projects. Just to show a little bit closer up what this three-lane configuration does, and in particular, the benefit of making the decision to build the path as part of the roadway. At one time, when we were looking at building the path by itself, there were properties in here that we were going to need almost 17 feet of right-of-way. We were able to reduce that down to five and a half feet by building these two projects together. So I think it really makes sense, and I'm glad we went that direction in working closely with the council at the time. Cost of the Design Services Agreement is $355,000. Staff recommends transferring $400,000 in funding available from cost savings from the Hoover Road multi-use path, which requires a waiver of city council policy two regarding the use of project savings to allow this transfer of funds. So I might mention again, real quick, we started this out as a path project. That funding was included there also for the signal. Now that we rolled that into the paving project, that's why we need to transfer those funds at this time. The adopted capital improvement program includes $500,000 in local sales tax funding for this project, which staff is recommending to initiate at this time. Bring in the total budget to $900,000 for design, right-of-way, and staff time. Project will be returned to the council later date for approval of construction funding. Staff recommends city council approve the Design Services Agreement, the new and revised budgets, adopt the resolution, and amending resolution, waive city council policy number two regarding the use of project savings to allow the transfer of funds and authorize the necessary signatures. And I apologize, I know that is a big recommendation. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Is there input on this project from the public? See none? We'll bring discussion back to the bench. If there's further discussion, there's none. Therefore, I will recognize Councilmember Ballard, as this resides in District 6, for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I will just say, I received two emails this morning of people that are very excited about this. So I approve, or I do the recommended action, approve the Design Service Agreement, new and revised budgets, adopt the new and amending resolutions, and waive city council's policy number two regarding use of project savings to allow the transfer of funds and authorize the necessary signatures.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk or open the roll, members cast their vote. Having received 7 yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Hess Pump Station Site Valve Replacements and Repairs.
Mayor, councilmembers, again, Gary Jansen, Public Works Engineering. The item before you is a request for funding for Hess Pump Station's site valve replacement and repairs. Some history on this. Hess Pump Station was constructed in 1974, and it utilizes existing reservoirs and piping. The reservoirs and yard piping are 20 to 80 years old, and there are approximately 21 valves connecting the water treatment plant, Hess, and the reservoirs. These valves are in need of replacement or repair based on their age and the operating conditions we know for most of the valves. The Northwest Water Treatment Plant will be connected to and utilizing this piping system in a location relative between the existing plant and Hess. Construction is anticipated in five phases, probably over three years. Manufacturing lead times and shipping of large valves currently is over one year. So we know some of these valves are broken and currently not in use. We know that some valves are going to be needed for replacement, so it makes sense to get some of these valves ordered at this time. To expedite beginning construction and make sure we stay on track for that timing for the connection of the new treatment plant, purchasing equipment prior to final design is recommended. The requested funding today will utilize to pre-purchase the valves, procurement of the final design contract, and bidding for construction. The final design contract and awarding of the project construction will be presented as future items for the city council's consideration. In April of 2020, the city council approved $500,000 for design and development of a cost estimate. The adopted CIP includes $6.4 million for this project, which staff recommends initiating at this time for a total budget of $6,900,000. Staff recommends city council approve the budget, adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? See none? Is there input on this item from the public? See none? If there's, bring discussion back to the bench, the further discussion on this? If there is no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action or approve the revised budget, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures per Charter Ordinance Number 211. This item requires 2/3 majority vote, so five votes are required to pass this on. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open the roll, members cast the vote. Having received 78 votes, we have achieved the 2/3 majority required. Madam Clerk.
CARES Act Finding Allocation, Humankind Ministries, Inc., Isolation Shelter.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Sally Steng with the Department of Housing and Community Services for the record. The item I have for you today is a funding agreement with Humankind Ministries to operate an COVID-19 isolation shelter. So the city of Wichita is recognized as an entitlement city and therefore receives funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for community development activities. Specific funding is for the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. The Emergency Solutions Grant Program provides funding to improve and operate homeless shelters, rapidly rehouse families and individuals experiencing homelessness, and prevent families and individuals from becoming homeless. The city received just over $3.3 million in additional ESG funding under the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act, CARES Act. ESG funding authorized under the CARES Act must be used to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus pandemic among individuals and families who are homeless, and to support additional homeless assistance and homeless prevention activities to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. In early January 2022, the need for isolation of COVID-19 positive individuals experiencing homelessness became critical as cases exceeded the capacity of Sedgwick County's FEMA isolation program. Discussions originally centered around redeploying the United Way Hotel Isolation Program, which was funded with ESG CARES money in March of 2020. Barriers to this option, though, were lack of hotels with the appropriate ventilation systems that were willing to take COVID-positive individuals, lack of staff to provide required services and meals, lack of transportation, and the explosion in the number of positive cases. These first discussions, the first call I received was on January 7th, where they had two individuals that could not get into the county isolation program. Three meetings were called by United Way, who coordinates the continuum of care, one on the 11th, one on the 12th, and one on the 14th. One of those meetings actually included Sedgwick County Health Director Adrian Byrne as we tried to figure out what we needed to do. They said it was two on January 7th. By January 12th, they said the number was 100. We had 100 COVID-positive homeless individuals to try and isolate. At that point, we realized in our discussions we needed one of the shelters to operate as a 24-hour shelter for COVID-positive individuals experiencing homelessness. Humankind Ministries was the only provider, and all of them were on the calls, willing to structure a program to meet the need using community space at the inn, which is separate from its emergency winter shelter. Humankind has requested ESG funding in the amount of $50,000 to support operation of a COVID-19 isolation shelter for homeless individuals. It opened on January 14th and has the capacity to serve 30 individuals at one time. The shelters open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with operational support. The clients are required to provide evidence of a positive COVID-19 test in order to enter the facility. Services are not provided to individuals with repeat positive tests within 30 days or for quarantining purposes, including close contacts or cold and flu symptoms. Individuals served must be 18 years of age or older and must be capable of living independently. There's no impact to the general fund. We're able to use unused ESG CARES fund from the landlord incentive program to be reallocated to fund this program. That's also a very positive thing. In 2020, we created the landlord incentive program to try and encourage landlords. It was a risk mitigation fund to fund damages due to damage to the unit or unpaid rent. We've actually had zero claims under that program since it came on. So that's a very positive thing, but it's left us with funding available to be able to fund this activity. We must expend 80% of the awarded ESG funds by March 31st, 2022, or it's subject to recapture. So it is recommended that the city council approve the funding allegation and authorize the funding agreement and necessary signatures, and I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Hallhaisel.
Thank you. First, I would like to say I appreciate you and the rest of the staff. We were at crisis level here a couple of weeks ago. You guys have worked tirelessly, and this is an issue that keeps, I'm sure, most of the people up here, all of us up at night. So thank you, thank you for all you've done. I remember in our discussions, you had brought up that we need one nurse per 12 patients. Does that apply to this shelter as well?
It does not. That is for the Sedgwick County Isolation Program, which is funded under FEMA. That FEMA requirement requires a nurse for every 12 persons in isolation. So because this is ESG CARES, that requirement is not there.
Okay, and this program ends March 31st? Do we have a mechanism in case we have another outbreak and another?
So we're continuing, we'll be coming back in a couple of weeks with a vaccine incentive program. We've been having all kinds of conversations. I keep saying, I keep throwing things at the wall about some things like bubbles, like they did for pro sports, where we can start trying really to identify who has been impositive in the past. How can we make sure that they're only, you know, along with people who have been vaccinated? How do we track who's been vaccinated, who's not? It is going to be a funding issue at some point, but we will continue to move forward. We're hoping that the county's issue related to having a nurse also is alleviated too. Some of that was related to the number of COVID-positive healthcare workers at the time, too, to be able to have another nurse so that they could increase the numbers of people they could have in their isolation program.
Okay. Also, what's the current status of COVID patients in our shelters right now?
You know, I would have to reach out to the continuum of care. It was coming down dramatically. We had a meeting again last week. At that point, shelters were opening up again because they had closed their doors. Union Rescue Mission really took those COVID-positive patients they had and were able to keep them in a wing. There was no in, no out. Emporia House, Humankind, Salvation Army, for a period, had to close their doors. They're now all reopened because the number of cases is subsiding. But, you know, we have to plan for the worst, that we're going to see another spike.
Thank you.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Sally, to that end, this is to operate through March 31st. Funding allocation of $50,000. If we don't need to use all $50,000, how do we get that back? Or should this be, say, up to $50,000 instead of a straight allocation of $50,000?
It is reimbursement. So whatever they do not spend to operate the program never goes out to them. And Humankind previously, you know, in another, for the emergency shelter a year ago, didn't use all the funding, and we were able to reallocate that back.
So we only allocate as they need reimbursement?
Correct. It is on a reimbursement basis.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Further questions for staff? So just, you touched on this. With folks who are experiencing homelessness right now, we're seeing COVID go through the entire population, including folks who are unhoused. Can you talk a little bit about efforts that we have to team up with the county to offer vaccines to folks who are experiencing homelessness so that, you know, we can keep them protected?
Sure. So that, actually, that contract is being negotiated right now with United Way, who's working with the county to set up specific vaccine clinics at the homeless shelters. They'll be able to use laptops in the HMIS system to be able to keep track and upload copies of the vaccine cards. And we're able to use ESG funds to provide monetary incentives in the form of gift cards to those experiencing homelessness who get vaccinated. So that contract is underway. We're hoping to be able to get out and get those vaccine clinics as soon as next week. United Way was talking. Our funding agreement will be coming forward on the 15th.
Excellent. Further questions for staff? See none? Thank you. Is there input from the public on this? If not, I'll make the motion before I do. I just do want to thank- I just do want to thank Humankind Ministries for being the one organization, it sounds like, that stepped up during this time with a plan to partner with the city to give folks the isolation and the care that they need. So thank you to our friends over at Humankind. With that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the funding allocation and authorize the necessary the, excuse me, funding agreement and necessary signatures. Authorize the funding agreement and necessary signatures. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk open the roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and second amended resolution for letter of intent to issue Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds, Clemmons Aviation LLC.
Good morning, Mayor and city councilmembers. Tim Goodpast here with the city's Office of Economic Development on behalf of the Airport Authority. The item before you today is a request to amend a letter of intent for Clemmons Aviation for Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds. Clemmons Aviation LLC is a legal entity that was formed in 2020 for the purpose of building two 18,000-square-foot hangars at Jabara Airport. Clemmons is owned by Dwayne and Julie Clemmons, that are owners of Stearman Airfield in Benton. The hangars are located in the 3,500 to 3,600 block of North Jabara Road. The area outlined in red is where that is located. You can see Web Road just a bit left of Center and 35th Street, where these are located. On May 19th of 2020, the Wichita Airport Authority approved a letter of intent to issue Airport Special Facilities Revenue Bonds in an amount not to exceed $4 million for the construction of two 18,000-square-foot hangars. The services offered in these hangars include charter operations, aircraft maintenance, aircraft storage, and pilot services. On February 2nd of last year, the request for the letter of intent was amended to an increased amount of $6.2 million for a third 18,000-square-foot hangar. The company is now requesting an increase of the letter of intent to $9.5 million to cover a total of five hangars. The bonds are providing a sales tax exemption on construction materials. No property tax abatement is being requested since the property is located on Airport Authority, which is property tax exempt in its own right. Clemmons intends to transfer 17 employees from Stearman Airfield to Jabara and projects that it will add 24 new employees over five years with annual wages in excess of $71,000 a year. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the Wichita Airport Authority Board close the public hearing, adopt the amended resolution of intent, and authorize the necessary signatures. Brad Christopher from the Airport Authority is here, as is Liz Clemmons from Clemmons Aviation. They can answer questions specific to the project as well, and I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none? Is there input from the public? If there's no input from the public, then we'll bring discussion back to the bench. If there's no further discussion, then the chair recognizes Vice Mayor Tuttle, as this item resides in District 2.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I first want to thank Clemmons Aviation for investing in our city. It's been great to see the growth and development that's happened on Web Road and in that corridor and at Jabara Airport. So I truly appreciate you investing in Wichita and in District 2 specifically. So with that, I would move that the Airport Authority Board close the public hearing, adopt the second amended resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second the motion. Clerk open the roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
There are appointments for any councilmembers at this time? If not, are there comments? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to let the public know there's been a lot of conversation around appointments that, aside from the folks currently serving, I will have, or I do have, three openings on the district advisory board. I still need a youth member on the district advisory board. I have a new opening on the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board, and also excess advisory board. So if you're watching and interested, please apply. I'd love to get folks serving in those roles.
And, Mr. Mayor, could we get a list of, I guess, the current appointments and what's coming up? And so that we have a better idea of what the, not just the councilmembers' own districts, but overall, what might be coming up? In case someone from District 3 or District 6 approaches me with an interest to serve, I can pass them along to one of the councilmembers, and we could work together to get good people in these seats.
Mayor, yes. We've got a, actually, all that information is online right now, but we can go ahead and provide that to each of the councilmembers for their districts and at large, if that's what you'd like.
Yes, if that's possible. Thank you. Councilmember Boobog.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to pass on my condolences to Rob Hartman and his family. Rob has served on, as a board appointee on MIPC for me for years, and his wife, Stephanie, just passed away this morning. She also served on my district advisory board. She's had diminishing health. She served as long as she could. I actually used to give her a ride back and forth to my advisory board and just thoughts and prayers for their family. She did a lot over there in the Pawnee Prairie Park area that she's lived over there since they built our house over 40 years ago.
Further comments? If there are no further comments, then I will make the motion to, I move that the city council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to receive information on an offer of settlement in a civil case pursuant to KSA 754319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for pending litigation, legal advice, claim settlement. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege